Maybe I stole your pen.
Are you on now?
Okay.
I'd like to call to order the July thirteen meeting of the Alapalms Planning Commission and acknowledge that press and public were duly notified in accordance with state law. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do we have any motions relative to that?
Would you approve a submitted
motion? In a second?
Second.
Any conversation, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Moving on, old business, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. Might we finally be putting that to bed? We're getting started.
Getting started.
Getting started with the first draft and discussion.
Yeah, we're getting started.
There's a whole lot of stuff in there, Douglas, do you wanna?
So, yes. Um, and I looked at the last the last time this group made changes to the comprehensive plan update was a year ago. Wow, which is kind of shocking to me. We, we, we basically started talking about transportation a year ago, and then we got sidetracked with short-term rentals and um, things started happening with the Alapalms Connector Study. So it's been kind of on ice for now a year, which was, I thought, would have sworn it was six months, but it's a year. Um, so we're, we're, the next um, element of the conference of plan, as you will recall, Planning Commission was kind of going through each of the seven, eight elements sequentially. Uh, and the next one to be reviewed was transportation. We looked at the old plan and acknowledged that it was very light, uh, and and quite frankly, just dated on the, the matters included there. So the decision was made to get a little bit of outside help from Stan Tech, who we worked with, and they provided a series of recommendations of things that you, that the city may want to consider. Um, at that meeting, at those workshops, the Planning Commission adopted or, or decided to include three, I think it was three of those um, considerations in the strategies section of the plan. So what was in the packet and distributed is a new draft, it's kind of a starting point, wanted to get y'all's feedback and just see what, what we wanted to add, where we wanted to go from here. And to kind of go through at a high level, what those changes are, we updated the traffic counts graph, we left a lot of the introduction the same as it was. Um, we got into in a little bit of detail, not, not detail, but a mention of um, the city's beach management plan that was approved in twenty fifteen. That is the plan where um, the city basically uh, allows beach parking on avenues and streets very close to the beach, and then creates residential parking districts on those sections in the back of the island. So that's the first red line paragraph um, in your packet. The uh, next paragraph talks about the twenty twenty-two um, effort where the city has entered into an agreement with the DOT uh, to study the Alapalms Connector, specifically the striping on the connector and the arrangement of the connector, that's one study. There's a second study that would also be done that will study that entire corridor uh, from Highway seventeen into the commercial district. So that's the second paragraph uh, that's new. And then it talks in the third paragraph that's new about the workshop that we had with Stan Tech. I have um, in this draft, I've included their slides, just kind of as a point of interest. May, maybe too interesting, gauging by the, by the people that showed up. And John, for your benefit, I hope you're doing well. We just saw some of your neighbors, they were slightly ahead of you, uh, and that's the what was in the packet was a, was
I understand. Just saying, here's something.
Things to look at, the Planning Commission, um, yeah, so, and at that meeting, the Planning Commission identified the three, I think it was
There was, there was three, it was like
It was three that they wanted included in the strategy section of the conference of plan. And those three strategies are in there as, as things for the city to consider, but the loop into your neighborhood was dead on arrival, as was the, the gondola rides were dead on arrival.
We just thought it'd be nice to include all of that in there, so people can look at the options that we looked at.
Well, thanks for
Yeah. But you're welcome to stay.
Yeah, yeah.
Throughout. All right.
Good to see you.
That's exactly.
See ya.
So, so Douglas, quick question. The transportation counts that were updated?
Yes.
Just, that doesn't include anything that comes over from the um, Hundley Bridge by breach?
That's correct. Yeah, there, um, that is specifically the um, the vector, the, the counter, the SCDOT counter on the connector. And, and I'm saying a counter, but I think we learned that it's it's something other than that. Is it a stripe or is it a?
It's extrapolated.
Through?
The cameras.
The cameras, that's what it is, yeah. It's not a, it's no longer traffic counter.
So
They had, they have, I think they have um some by breach inlet, but, but I don't think you could get exact kind of full-on, full-off, if I'm remembering correctly.
So how do we capture that data?
How do we? How did we?
How do we? I mean
Full-on, full-off?
Well, there's this, you know, you get a significant portion that comes from that way as well.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I guess our traffic counts are probably underestimated, given the fact you don't know that. I, I don't know.
Well, yes, we're not getting, I don't think we're getting full-on and full-off.
Are you getting walkers and bicyclists also?
No. It's a good question, though, Suzanne, and I'll, I'll definitely ask um Stan Tech if that's possible to get. I, I think, as I understand it, the counters on the breach inlet side are either before and after an alternate road, and they, they could have turned before they got to the connector.
So there's a camera over there by the park that points toward, you know,
Yeah.
us, Alapalms. And when I say the park, it's the one on Sullivan's. And I noticed on our side, and this may be on private property, there's a couple of cameras that point the other way. I don't know if that was um, intended for the boat house's purpose, or what, but they're on a big pole.
I don't know. He hit the police.
Oh, okay. He did, I thought. Then I thought it was Oh, you know what? He had an emergency tour put down there.
Or like drowning.
For drowning, so that it goes
But not, I don't think it's tied, I don't think it's tied to the traffic count. But I can verify that, if you, if you all think that this would be
I think it would give us a better picture, I don't know what you guys think.
If it's available.
Yeah, I know when we got into the dis, kind of the discussion and looked at even with San Tech here, there was questions about how much traffic is breach inlet, how much goes down twenty-first, how much is going in Waldings. Um, so yeah, we don't know where it's going, other than what comes across the connector.
I guess if we're gonna have a traffic jam, it's gonna be at this intersection.
I've seen both. I have seen both.
Cause they're All the way down, so
Yes, well, I yes.
Well, that's kind of covered in eight-point-three goal, which is to include the accuracy of our data, if you can get harder looking at it.
So we did, you know, historically, we had, and, and Chief Buchanan, the prior chief, was very techie, very into um, gadgets and things. Um, and he did, we installed embedded um, counters on, on every lane, and so he could tell how many were turning right, how many were turning left, who were going straight. Um, but they were, they were always broken, always problematic. Um, and then the DOT started, they kind of improved what they were providing. Um, and, and you will recall when they were, when Stan Tech was here, they kind of went through their dashboard and, and the data that you can get from their counts. And it was, it was pretty impressive, I mean, it was much better, much more user-friendly than what the chief was getting, was, you know, kind of raw clicks of a, of a counter. Um, but if we, I mean, certainly could be um be improved if we, if we felt like it should be and would be useful.
I only see one camera on Alapalms at the end of the section here.
There should be two, there should be one that points from
Are you looking at the counts, Sandy, are you looking at the, the ones?
Five-one-one.
So, yeah, so this is a different um
There's one that faces toward Harris Teeter.
Yeah.
And then there's, there's two at that one intersection now.
SCDOT traffic counts, if you Google that, it'll take you to the, to a map that has their various counters, counter locations.
So one of the things on this graph, which I guess, I don't know you're kind of assuming without the data. All the, the last three, four years, it's been pretty solid, which so I don't think it reflects like, over time, from, you know, two thousand, say, eight to now, how the numbers have increased, or if they've increased. Um, which I thought would be kind of interesting to have in the comprehensive plan, but
Well, we, we actually took out, I mean, the, the current approved plan has old data.
And I was thinking, I guess you could go back to the old plan, look it up and see that, which is, which I didn't do before I got here.
I think it was a different location.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it was counting a different, I think it goes back to Chief Buchanan's old embedded. Um, but we could certainly look at that, too, if we could, how far back?
Yeah, that's the problem, is it wouldn't be necessarily comparable, because it may not be from the same location.
Right.
Okay, so there are three cameras, and the third one being up on rifle range, and two um, here.
Rifle range works.
Cameras, are you looking at cameras or, or locations that they're getting counts?
Cameras.
Oh, that's
What they get the count right now, I don't know what they're, they're uh, don't they have a then they put a traffic counter up over on Mount Pleasant's side of the connector?
Yes.
The old surgical tubes.
There are the two on the Alapalms.
That's the camera, but I think somewhere over here, right up here is where the counter is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but like, that's just, that's
Not the camera, the counter.
Well, David, I'll, I'll just I will see how far back
That, that was just a question, and it wasn't
If we can have an O-line in there, instead of just going to nineteen, have O-eight, or some historical perspective of what it is.
Again, it, you know, you can, we can always go back to the old plan, I just thought, yeah, it was kind of interesting, like, when we saw that, it really doesn't show like it's had any really changed the last four years.
I mean, obviously, the, the COVID drop is the only kind of point of interest in that graph, I guess, is
Yeah.
They're very consistently stacked.
Yeah, the other one.
Right.
There's two on
On this intersection.
Yeah.
Cameras.
Correct. Yeah.
You're not looking at you're not looking at a map that has the locations where they can provide
No.
Data counts?
They're looking at the cameras.
Cameras, okay.
The Stan Tech gave us, you go to South Carolina DOT website.
Yeah, somewhere there, you, that's, that shows where you can get counts for, where they're collecting counts. Which is what this graph is taken from. So I always hesitate to put too many years, you know, you put, you, you, we include, I put in here, I say, I, I hesitate to do it, then I point to where I immediately did it, in twenty fifteen. Um, so I'm referencing something that already happened seven years ago. This plan is supposed to kind of have a useful life of five years. Um, so it's twelve years old when we're looking at it again. I put that date in there because that plan has kind of come under attack by some, to some degree. Um, from the DOT, it's been challenged, you know, the public the beach-going public has kind of cha-challenged that plan, so to me, that's a kind of a important milestone. But again, you, you all think that's okay to leave in there?
Talking about the June
June of twenty fifteen, that they approved that beach manage, that beach plan, and that kind of shapes
I, I would say, when I looked at it, I questioned the, the use of the word approved, I think it was endorsed. Which has a different connotation.
I think, I think um, the secretary used the word approved.
I couldn't remember, I was trying to find it, I couldn't find the plan, I did, they said it complied with Title fifty-seven, which is the traffic laws. But they ignore all other laws, and said it was up to the city to make that determination, so it wasn't like, again, I don't know how that all works out, and who approves what in the state level, but when all this came up, I just thought it was kind of interesting, the wording that they used in the actual
And they, they actually, I mean, they used ter, I think they used the terms applaud, I mean, they applauded our effort. They, they used very
Positive terms.
Yeah, they used very positive terms. I, I know that they had to approve the plan before we would actually install the signs.
Right.
Um, they did approve our plan, and we got an encroachment permit, so, so they did give us technically an approval.
Okay.
In their letters, they, they used very positive terms of being, you know, proactive, they applauded the effort, it was a creative solution, I mean, all those terms kind of came out, didn't really want to put that, you know, kind of back in there, didn't want to make a
Right.
um, kind of contentious position of
During the debates two years ago, didn't they reaffirm the plan, so to speak, during all the controversy, didn't the secretary kind of said, yes?
Well, the secretary threatened to
But then ultimately, there was, I thought there was a letter generated, that said, after we redid some of the park, and they said, this, this, the plan stands.
Yeah, well, so that is what the angle parking, that's kind of how the angle parking came to be, is we're not so sure about your plan.
I understand.
Yeah, and ultimately, yeah, they did. After we did the angle parking, they said, okay, we now have no issue, but prior to the angle parking
Oh, yeah, no, they tried to pull, thank
Right.
Okay.
Um, is that opening a, a wound to go into the angle parking?
Probably.
You think it's
Absolutely.
Opening a wound?
It is a wound.
It is.
It's a eyesore, it's disgusting, doesn't accomplish what it's been to accomplish. People still back right out in the middle of the streets.
Yeah.
There's lives at danger, it's
You, so the angled aspect is
The parallel parking works just fine.
Yeah. So, you know, in the, in the, kind of through the official lens of how the government dealt with that, how the city and the state. That was a compromised position that the city council endorsed, I think unanimously, I think it was approved unanimously at the city. And it was, it was endorsed by the state as being, you know, this is a, this is a workable solution that so I, I don't know that the city would be in a position of saying you know, we hate this and we don't want to have it, because our, our council, I think unanimously approved it. Uh, to be implemented.
All times change. Now that it's in, it's not functioning, I think it needs to be revisited.
It, what, on this, I, I mean, obviously, the situation we're in with the, the state owning the roads here, we're, we're always going to be in a situation where we have to work collaboratively with them. Yet, we don't really seem to have a mechanism to do that, everything is done in a knee-jerk reaction, you know, crisis-oriented in, in thirty days or less kind of thing. And, and shouldn't, shouldn't we be establishing a mechanism where we can work collaboratively that, you know, on all these issues, not just the parking, on how we, how we redo Palm Boulevard, and how we redo intersections? Really have a plan put forward for the next five years, or whatever it is. Rather than fighting every effort every time it comes up. And nowhere in this plan does it does that, we just keep listing items and saying, we're gonna have, we're gonna do something, we do something, we do something.
Yeah.
But we don't really say, let's establish a working group, of, of, assign some people have collaborative effort where we can put together a true five-year plan with DOT, and have them tell us why it won't work, and have us tell why this is what we want to do.
Or make it more dynamic.
Yeah, and none of that really comes through in this, we, we keep making lists, and every five years, we make the same list, saying, here's the things we need to address, parking and tran-transportation and, and traffic. But yet, we don't really have a mechanism to do anything. And I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
And even on this, we, we're assigned things to committees under, under the workshop structure that don't exist anymore, public safety, um, who's gonna do
Well, that's, that's the departments.
Of the departments, okay, but I mean, how, how is that gonna happen, and who's gonna put up together a plan and do that? That's always been one of my frustrations, we all have plans every five years, we keep listing the same thing, and five years later, we list them again, and five years later, or fifty years later, we list them again. Without having, maybe there need, we, we have subgroups to, and maybe council needs to say, we need a transportation subgroup to, to, you know, to get members, put them together, and, and citizens there's, there's bright engineers on this island, say, let's have a working group to put together a plan.
And we
And then me, and then me with the OT.
This a year ago. When we were revisiting this, and I thought that we had put some language in, and I, like Steve, I don't see it in here, where um, we were addressing the need to um deal with our, our ingress and egress issues here in the community, for both for the residents and for the, the folks visiting. Both from the mainland and, and from all the renters.
So is it, I'm trying to get to what, is this a, a strategy? Or is this
Well, it's a comprehensive plan, to Steve's point. Where are, you know, why are we just rehashing, why aren't we kind of putting something more um
Moving forward.
Yeah. One of our
All oriented.
Maybe one of our goals should be to establish a working group, and, and then they can start looking at strategies, but I mean, and everything from, you know, citizens to say, this is not what we want, this is ugly. You know, we need to sit down with DOT, when we have a a, a proactive approach, well-thought-out, as opposed to in thirty days, let's put in angle parking.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I guess, I don't know, goal eight-one, we start to do that, truly, of page fifty-nine.
Steve, you're saying, I mean, I think eight-one is kind of a list of, a task list, but you're saying to actually create
What's the process or mechanism to do it? I, I agree, one, I think lists many of the object, many of the things that, that need to be looked at.
And I think you also, uh, I mean, I think your first point, and they're related, is just to have a closer working relationship with the DOT. Establish a, and quite frankly, I think that on a personal level Desiree and Secretary Hall have now, through kind of what they went through, they do have a much closer relationship
Sounds like improving, but we can't fight
Before, I don't, I don't know that the Secretary of the DOT ever had been here, had ever, I mean, they, they had at some point, but it is very much now kind of a, a monthly meeting with the secretary, so there is a relationship now. Took a lot of strain to get there, and um, may, may not be the most cordial, but there is at least a tie now, where I, I don't think there was really, we weren't on their radar at all, I think, a year ago.
And, and maybe
Couldn't get, couldn't get anybody here.
Now that we have that
Yeah.
We want to put a group together, that can start interacting on a more frequent basis, rather than just assign it to, to city staff, who have a lot in their play or anything, let's look at what else we can do.
If we identify the problems, then we can go up with some solutions, and then, there's that, but
Right.
I, I think the island got steamrolled a couple of years ago with COVID. And I'm not sure that the secretary had a real positive relationship with anyone on our island at that point.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's to the detriment of our community that we have traffic that's so bad on Saturday afternoon, people can't get up and back to church. Uh, and you can't get on the connector, you can't get home from Mount Pleasant. It's, and it's dangerous, I mean, if there's a medical emergency, how do we evacuate someone with our current system, which I think is a real
Right.
We don't have a twenty-year-old population here.
Right.
So, firstly, I think some of these things are good, but if you identify the problems, then you know how you can get to the solutions or plans.
Douglas, I'm not sure how it, it, it works in, in the city government structure, of what I'm talking about, I mean, you know, we, we, you know, you've got city staff, we've got departments in there. We used to have committees that reported to, to city council, and they've gone to a different side, a different format with workshops. But, but some group, ra- rather than just assigning back to public safety or the city staff, saying, you come up with a plan. It, it probably fit better into the, into the committee structure, but I'm not sure we have that, is that something we should be doing more of, you're saying the Planning Commission should develop a plan for traffic?
Well, I, I was sitting there wondering, questioning that, too, is
Is that us?
About a
Who else does?
Is that really us?
I admitted, that's my question, what's the, what's the
So, you know, right now, we happen to have this exact situation where the city, the DOT, has hired um a consultant to develop a plan, to develop solutions on the connector, and it's, right now, it's very much focused on the configuration of the connector, but that, those meetings are really happening between um, the chairperson of public safety, the city administrator, the secretary uh, of the DOT, kind of her right-hand person, and um and the town of Mount Pleasant. So there is kind of currently a, just a working group, that just happens to be kind of the group that's working together on uh
They're kind of focused on the connector issue, though, right?
Yeah, that's just the connector, so nobody, and there, there is no other, there's the connector study. There is the corridor study that's gonna happen with that same group. And that's it. I mean, there is no other plan, but I'm just kind of, I guess, talking out loud of how that process is evolving and how that's working. Uh, but it's, it's the first time that's ever happened, it's happened very kind of informally and, and uh, out of just reaction to what happened on the connector. So it's kind of, we're, we're in a react, we're in a reactionary stage to what happened.
Well, in the bigger picture, I think, to Steve's point, and, and what Jeff was mentioning, I mean, Palm Boulevard needs to be part of this conversation.
Right.
And the residential communities and the, you know, the, the parking one. You know, the heavy days that takes place on, in the uh, non-Palm Boulevard areas of the community.
So would a, all right, so now, kind of putting on as a, as a, an example, I guess I'm also thinking through completely different conundrum, but drainage. The city, through this group, through this group, created uh, an RFP solicited uh, input from potential um, engineers that would look at the island from a, a drainage standpoint. That consultant is now working uh, on our behalf, on a drainage master plan.
Well, they were here the other day, we're trying
They were, yeah, they were, they were, they were out driving around and taking photos, which was good to see, and I think they're, they are doing a great job, I think. Um, that effort is kind of being reported, it's being managed by the staff, I mean, the staff is inter, interplaying with um so maybe, uh, I mean, would that be how this happened, that, that this group? So, and, and, and I guess to back up even beyond before that, the first step of that was this group recommended to put into the next year's budget, a chunk of money for that plan. Once the money was allocated, then this group, we worked on a, on an RFP, interviewed the responders, came up with a recommendation, and now that plan is working itself through, and they're working on it, so then there's gonna be kind of a delivery of that plan, that'll happen at, at various groups, but is, is that the model that we should follow?
The only layer on that that's, that makes it a little more complicated is it, the, the drainage we control. This, this, we, we should have some interaction with DOT as we start putting these plans together, before we start spending a lot of money and putting plans, so I would just layer, how do we get
How do we get them to the tape?
Right, so, and not necessarily the director.
Right.
No, exactly, right, exactly.
That's too top heavy. Yeah, that was probably why there was knee jerk reaction. We need to find the people. In the middle somewhere.
So I started having this flashback. It's a bad start. Which, no, when when we were doing the beachfront management plan. In twenty ten timeframe. It's and I'm looking at Sandy, we said that we went through that a very similar process to what we just did for. The drainage of. Soliciting ideas, having meetings with the committee, we, and that's all led up to that twenty fifteen plan was pretty much kind of the outcome. Of. Three or four years worth of. Efforts that went on.
And Stan Tech generated a, a report.
Is it time to do that again?
Well, I still have my drawings of the old parking.
Yeah, yeah, I still do. And again, it's like, you know, again, there's a bit of huge turnover, so that a lot of that stuff that went on is. You know, most of council probably doesn't even know about it. Yeah, that plan still, I mean, it came up heavily in the. But dialogue after. And that we just had that led to the angle parking, I mean, that. So, yeah, to your point. We did it for beach parking. In twenty twelve. Something like that led to the, to a twenty fifteen plan that that. All the.
Kind of got us to this point today. And again, it's like what we were, some of the other things we've done, we've kind of said, you know, here's our best guess, let's reevaluate. We never seem to go back and reevaluate, but uh. That's kind of, that's what, that's where my mind was kind of going. Is this something that? Planning commission just needs to put on the plate for.
So, so do we put as a strategy? Budget. For. Will that be fiscal year twenty four? Next, the next fiscal year budget enough to do a comprehensive. Transportation plan.
How much is the, how much has the traffic changed since two thousand and fifteen?
Well, but we were looking, so in twenty fifteen, we're looking specifically at parking arrangement. I mean, it was, it was down and and. Part of it then was studying pay to park. Uh, there was, but it was, it was not really traffic flow and. You know, getting egress in 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 and out. It was more. The traffic, the beach traffic migrating into and parking in neighborhoods. Uh, and it was, you know, should we? Pay to make people pay to park? If so, do we do it with kiosks? Do we do it with a, with some kind of technology? So it was a different. Problem being studied in twenty fifteen.
Douglas went out to his benefit and. Counted every parking space from breach inlet to fifty seventh avenue and submitted a map and a report. With all of the spaces available on. Third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, tenth, you know, down to fifty seventh street and and we had a, we had a very. A succinct number of spaces uh that uh were were counted to make sure that we met. The requirements of the beach management. Act.
Right.
Uh, for beach access so that we would qualify for all sorts of uh. Interesting funding and other grants and things. So that's still, I assume, uh, very little has changed with that, with the exception of the Palm Boulevard.
The angling changed, right?
I think it's actually reduced the number of Palm Boulevard. For vehicles. That's honestly, I mean, I remember the traffic jams in two thousand and fifteen, just like yesterday, and they're the same as we have now. In the summer on Saturdays and Sundays, you just don't leave your house.
Yeah.
We could also refresh some studies that we had done of. Different ways to delineate Palm Boulevard. David Stevens really always wanted, you know, that third lane because he lived in Wild Dunes. On Monday mornings, we'd get caught by the. Trash trucks and, you know, you don't move. Um. But that's a real thing and and that middle lane could be used, just like we've talked about with the connector, those none of, none of our purview, but maybe a a middle lane. That's an emergency lane or reverse lane or, you know, but we need to probably. Bring that stuff back up. It's it's in the records, we just need to refresh. Relook and and do something a little more comprehensive. That's not just before it was flow or parking and maybe we need to. You know, bring it all back together. Um, and and there was different attitudes, I think. Back then, you know, as to. When we thought we could restrict parking and just park the beachfront management plan, I I did a very. Uh, a study that was, you know, very debilitating if you were from Mount Pleasant wanting to park. I mean. There there was a handful, we have the node of parking here. If you parked like six to twelve people near breach inlet. I give up my my. By avenue. I won't say which one that is because it could park twelve, eighteen cars. That's another, you know, so. If we found one more place to park, perhaps in front of the Citadel Beach Club, we wouldn't have to park another car on Palm Boulevard. You know, but that wasn't popular and and that's maybe not a good idea either. But, you know, maybe the times have changed. We've also. I had an idea of maybe parking six cars per beach access point. On the ocean side and doing it in a way that's pleasantly landscaped, so it's not as obtrusive as wheel stops. And maybe it's changing materials, maybe. Instead of killing grass, uh, we put down some. Gravel pathway or something. Rock ROC, something that might, you know, hold a wheel. Down without. You know. And and just, you know, maybe we just need to study that kind of stuff.
Well, so. Ron is uh referencing the beach management plan. Has these requirements of what, how many spaces constitute an open? An open beach, a public beach, and you have to be a public beach to be. Kind of able to be eligible for funding if your beach gets damaged. There was kind of this idea in the city that that is a state standard, and so maybe that is telling us. All that we have to. Account for if we, if we get, and it was something like six cars. Get you an eighth of a mile each way. And we were kind of thinking of things through the lens of maybe that's all we have to. Provide to the public. I would say now, and I would say as a result of what's happened, that the state has completely, including changing the law. Has completely changed and clarified that we cannot just.
There are two different rules from two different departments, you know.
Yes, one was the beach. People were saying this is as few as you had to have. The other was the highway people who are now saying. You're not gonna, you're not gonna significantly reduce parking and get it approved through the DOT. So it's a little bit different.
The inflow, the ingress and egress is truly what the challenge is. Short of reducing. Some of the existing party. Well, you know, they go out and work the the traffic. Signals, but that doesn't help. I mean, puts them in danger. Sitting there looking at the switches every two minutes. I mean, there's a lot of people who want to come to the beach and best plan is not well advertised, that's parking in Mount Pleasant and taking the bus home. Because I don't think anybody who comes to the beach wants to get stuck in the traffic. It takes an hour to have out of your state. So I think there's gotta be other options, and I think this committee would be a good place to start with options. And then we could present the city council with them rolling. Uh, my understanding is that the governor is going to listen to this stuff, but not for the previous city councils, so no way of doing it. And supposedly gonna listen is. What what's happened here has kind of been a travesty. And. I think this group has got enough history behind this that you can pull up some archives and go through what was done in the past. And see how it applies currently. Be nice if you could click off how many cars are coming out of the intersection, say there's no more parking. Go somewhere else.
Well, that was, that was kind of part of Stan Tech's, one of the things is a. Interactive. Real time information about. There's only twelve spaces somewhere, and and I think they got it down to. Here are the twelve spaces.
That's eight point one point four.
Yeah.
That's great. It's like a parking lot. I mean, why drive around parking lots full?
Right. So is it? Eight point one through eight point four. Were the top things that Stan Tech. Identify. Would. New eight point one be? Put. Enough money in the upcoming budget. To implement.
A comprehensive plan to include these items.
That kind of gets to your original. Everybody agree to that? I mean, I think that's a.
Something, some wording like that.
A new strategy that truly starts the ball rolling down. The the ball of snow running, rolling down the mountain, I think was your original excellent point of. How do we not just have this sit on the?
Right, otherwise you said, and and get to just my, there's different, there's how we get to that, whether that's, that's. An RFP to an outside source, whether we have enough data existing, ready to compile it ourselves, but I mean. That that we can then take the next step. What process do we want to use to get that plan put together? Um, but I think it needs to be a document that says here's, here's a plan. And and I think we can't underestimate. Somewhere in this, we'd have to put in the words, we have to collaborate with SCDOT. There's no sense us putting a plan together and trying to force it on them.
Right.
We need to sit down and say, you guys helped us put this plan together. You know, whether whether they assign one of their district engineers to the, to a, a, a working group with us. Who who can review the draft list. I think a collaborative effort is what's gonna be needed. Otherwise, it's gonna be dead on arrival.
It helps city council and the mayor.
So it it developed a plan and kind of with some words, it says in collaboration with SCD.
Develop, you know.
Cause it is their roads. I mean, you know, we can write all the plans we want.
Right.
I agree.
Well. I guess, and if we're getting to that, what I was gonna say, the who approves the beachfront management? Because it kind of tied, since they tie together.
The local. Beach management plan?
Yeah.
So that is, that's also happens to be something that's currently being worked on. It's an update much like this. Um, and it's. The new draft is pretty far along, uh, probably pretty close to being.
Well, not, well, I was referring, if we're looking at at DOT because any traffic change would, or parking change would. Need their approval. It would also. Be tied in with the beachfront management, so any change would need whoever that approves that plan to say. Oh, I would approve a plan that contains that, if that's what we're proposing. So, uh, that was my point, my point. I'm not sure who does.
So council approves that plan, it then goes to OCRM.
So, yeah, so, so it's how do we get OCRM and DOT and with a working group from the island to come up with traffic? Or parking?
I don't think, I mean, OCRM is. I just don't think that the DOT is gonna let the city. Reduce the available parking down to a point that it's of any concern to OCRM. I mean, they're, they're so, they require so few, we're never gonna get close to that threshold, I don't think, but but it definitely should be coordinated.
Yeah, there is a relationship there, there's no doubt, but if if you look at, if we say, let's look at. Palm Boulevard between twenty first and forty first. From a transportation point of view, obviously it's gonna have an impact on parking also. So the two of them do have to be related.
Right.
Whereas if you say, you know, we want to look at the intersection of of Palm and the connector, that really has little parking implications. It's a traffic problem. So I mean, the problems are a little different, but SCD, DOT would need to be involved in all of those.
Right.
So, we don't. It's an ongoing problem. We don't really say that. And any of what we have. Rewritten. And yet we're trying to address it.
I think if you, if you put. If you request money.
Traffic.
For the twenty twenty.
Ingress and egress. Holds many of us. A hostage. As residents. I think. It occurred to me the other night, if we were to. We were to storm the Capitol.
Didn't you just say, Douglas, that? Eight, the new eight point one would be to request money for the twenty twenty four budget?
To to create a plan, to work with DOT to create a plan.
For the new comprehensive.
To address these.
Yes.
To address the strategies below.
Why? Why are we not putting in there why we want the money?
Yeah, we should.
We're hostages. We want money to study and figure out, solve. I don't want to study, I'm a solve. The traffic problem.
Okay.
Which giving him the why, and the why is because we have.
And so in a comprehensive plan, I'm thinking that. How do, you know, we're looking at numbers here that. I would challenge. Have continued to increase and will continue to increase. As Mount Pleasant, Charleston County expands and puts in new subdivisions um and traffic. I mean, there's a new one on rifle range across from that part. Uh, the Mount Pleasant proposed part, uh. Five hundred homes, there's, there's another two thousand cars. Guess how they're selling every one of those houses? You're three miles to the beach.
Maybe two hour drive, but. So Sandy, is your, I mean, and I think it's, if I'm hearing that correctly. We have strategies and goals to improve traffic flow and reduce congestion. That's a. Goal and it has a list of strategies. Are you saying that the body of the? Element itself should kind of hit the reader over the head with, we have a nightmare of congestion. In the summer, which it doesn't really currently do.
It doesn't do that right now.
I think it needs to be, yes. It's a problem we have and we have to find other ways to solve it. In addition, I think the police. Department and the fire department need to be brought into this as consultants. Because they deal with this on a daily basis. And in the past, when the connector problem began. No one was called from police department nor the fire department nor Sullivan's Island. They're a lot more interactive now. And very aware that they're. Can, they're, you know. Coordinating with the sheriff, the county of Mount Pleasant. The chief gave a report last night, it was pretty, pretty good. Um, not the chief, um. Officer Swain spoke, but um.
Alright, so I'm trying to keep up here. We're gonna add a paragraph in the body that says. Traffic out here is a nightmare. In the summer.
Traffic and safety.
Traffic and it's causes, it causes safety concerns. And then are you?
He wants the word hostage.
Think I used the dismal failure once.
It may be a dramatic word, but when you feel like you can't leave your house on Saturday and Sunday, that you're a hostage.
I'll put that in quotes.
There we go.
Jeff, was your point that we should have? The police chief. At a, at. Like the next meeting to just. Run through the issues.
Police chief and fire chief bounce some things off of them because they're. They're affected more than we are.
You think we're at that point? Ready to do that next month?
Well, if they don't think there's a problem, then maybe it's just my imagination that I can't leave my house in the weekend. It would be. It wouldn't be good, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Are we, do we all agree that that would be good?
Present what they have done. I don't know that everybody knows what they have done. Uh, and there has been a lot of coordination that that is. Um, in my. Per view, it it's helping a lot.
You know, was was good to hear and when they talked about the traffic even for the Fourth of July, how Mount Pleasant stepped up and, you know, so I, there, I think there are some improvements. And we should hear about the coordination.
I I feel like. I've heard, at least from the. Police chief, that the reconfiguration has not. Hasn't caused safety. Problems on the connector. I don't know if that's, but but I I guess you all are are not talking about just lane configurations. You're just talking about in general. What happens to the safety of the island? When it's Katie bar the door and you can't. Get on one end of the.
I mean, I was on the connector Friday and. I mean, I was on the connector Friday and the ambulance was coming down, couldn't go anywhere because people didn't know where to go. Right and go in the bicycle lane or go left and cross the double yellow line. So we're sitting there watching these ambulances. Everything. Lights are going off and and everything sirens are sounding and no one knew what to do. And that's not the first time you've seen that. I mean, it happens all the time.
So. So kind of an assessment of.
And the same thing happens on Palm Boulevard on the weekends. The fire, the fire truck goes by, they they can't get through. No one can get through. There's nowhere to pull.
Everybody agree with having them here? Next month. An assessment, kind of give their. Professional assessment of the. Current state of affairs with our traffic flow and congestion.
I think the more input, the better.
What else do we have for next one? Is this the end? Then once we get to transportation, are we?
Um. We might have one more. I think we have, I think we have one more. We're we're nearing the end.
So I guess, yeah, my question is, I mean, we kind of beat around that we we think we should have, we we should dive deeper into. Traffic and parking. Um. Do we need to do that to get something in the comprehensive plan for this round or is and then as I kind of went through that, I was thinking we hit that. So we had the strategy eight one. Eight. Which was in the old plan, which probably really never got, uh, so it's develop a management plan to lessen the effects of beach traffic. As on the island roadways.
What does that mean?
Well, it's kind of what we're saying, but we never did it since it was written in the plan last time. So.
Well, then it's kind of replaced by the new eight one, which is developed comprehensive plan. So.
Right, yeah.
One eight really. Doesn't need to exist in.
Sure.
Well, I thought it was a little bit different. That was.
Yeah, I don't see the two as the same.
No, the eight one. One.
I had a question. This eight one one is new. He he created a new eight one.
Yeah.
So eight one, eight one.
Not this one.
Four kind of does take. Eight, one, eight. Develop a plan.
Yeah.
To lessen effects beach traffic has on the island roadways eight. But four is evaluate providing real time beach parking space availability data to the public to improve efficiency for ingress and egress. For beach visitors.
I I actually had a, I had a question mark by. Eight, one, new eight. And that has a a year of two thousand nine. I think to me, I believe that that was what the. Beach plan did in twenty fifteen. I was gonna, I think that that's what. That whole effort was started by eight one four. And the beach plan was beach parking plan was the result.
Yes.
That bullet. So I was, I was thinking that that would come out. Um.
Well, that was a question. Is it that or did we, are we start that whole process kind of again?
And eight one, eight one one, new eight one one replaces that eight one four and that one comes out, I think, is what it could.
A new, new eight one one.
Yes.
Not the one that's on, not the one that's on our.
Yeah, we enter, we insert a new eight one ones.
Yeah, okay.
So that one we come, that one comes out, right?
We're good. I agree.
Cause I, you know, I think in the past, we came to the conclusion that not all of our traffic problems are based solely on parking.
Oh.
You know, we've got hundreds of. For thousands of car trips going into Wild Dunes for work, play golf, restaurant. You know, so it's, and they have places to park. I mean, we got twenty five thousand cars coming on and off the island. We only have what? Two thousand parking places? Um, so. Yeah. So where are they going? So, yeah, it could be us. Where's the other twenty two thousand cars going?
Right.
Um.
But you have four o'clock on Saturday. It's check in.
Right.
And while Dunes Park goes and backs all the way out to forty first street.
Well, at least they moved it down to the end now.
Yeah.
You don't come in the first gate.
Well, no, it's for check in. Well, for general check.
It used to stop at that first game.
Right, yeah. Now they go all the way down.
Traffic's supposed to go down, except local traffic.
Plus, I think someone needs to tell us if if we have a counter and there's no more spaces available, where are those cars gonna go?
That's exactly. Right.
That's number to pop up on the count.
Most of you start parking lot?
Wait to see those red, your brake lights kick in.
Yeah, it does create a problem. I feel good that that's. Rolling forward a bit. I like. Get a plan, get. Um, add a few more. Add a paragraph about. Being held hostage.
The need, there's a need.
Against your will.
We're gonna add as a strategy.
Uh, not even able to pay ransom to get out. Sandy, we can take all those concrete bumpers and make a new place for Fisher. Feel it.
I'll be your new road home.
I. I am curious. I I kind of had the impression and I am not terribly close to it, but I thought that. I have heard positive things about the angle park. That it did kind of. For lack of a better word, help things. It clarified where you park. How you park. And it. It made it more effective. I don't know. I.
I've never heard anything positive about it.
It it. Is it appearance?
Well, appearance, there's no grass. It's supposed to be, the grass is supposed to be mowed by the state.
Yeah.
That never happens. There's trash all over those things. People dump their trash bags when they walk out. The people who live there don't like it. And it's literally, I mean, the the parallel parking, it's easier to see where the spots spot is.
Right.
So if you want to make a U turn, trying to get in between two big trucks. It's a mess.
You can see your vision is better. In parallel parking, like if you're on the angle.
Trying to get out.
Getting out, you have a blind spot. Um.
Be an interesting question for the. Chief. I I just had it in my mind that it was now aesthetics aside, I don't think I've heard anybody say it looks good, but I've. I believe that I've heard that. It's more effective at getting people to park correctly.
Yeah.
The biggest problem with it is you're cross, you're coming from Mount Pleasant.
Yep.
Or wherever you're going towards Wild Dunes and you're turning around to go into a diagonal space. Now. Leaving, it's, I think that the chief likes it because you're pulling back and you're in your lane.
Right. But isn't that? That's better than parallel park.
Actually.
You don't have to go, but you don't have to go, to his point, a pull one eighty, you're going.
Yeah, you could actually pull into the spot where parallel, you've got a turn, go down the street. Circle the block, come back, then block traffic as you back into a space. Oh.
We could.
But it worked for a long time.
Yeah, it's worked really well for a hundred years.
Yeah.
Right.
That was a problem. And you couldn't take a people, you couldn't.
Right.
But that's not bad.
Anything, Jeff, I thought we're gonna do it on the other side. I'm I'm messing with you. I I just.
I got a trailer, Richard, my car, you're gonna see you driving the concrete.
They're not even concrete.
Yeah.
And I, it's, it's a spike.
They got spikes in them.
You can pull those out easy.
Yeah.
It's sad.
If they, I mean, if they worked. And aesthetics, I mean, it does seem as though. The aesthetics could be cleaned up.
I guess is another reason for a well thought out long term comprehensive plan rather than a knee jerk reaction because. Yeah, I guarantee there's S E D U change engineer saying, let's put it on the other side. We on that right away too.
Yeah.
Well, S E O T can put a multi level garage down.
Exactly. So, you know, I I think that's why let's try to get proactive and have a plan for traffic and parking along.
Yeah, the garage is thirteenth avenue access.
They're watching. They'll be back. Their wives will be back standing.
All right, so we'll have. More added, more information provided. And then take another pass at this next month of that. That works for everybody. Yep. Got some good notes.
We beat the hostage.
Hostage in there. Uh, next thing is update on short term. Rental recommendations. As you all. Well know, um, those recommendations. Have left the planning commission. They are now with city council. Um, city council last night, for those that weren't able to watch, had. Um, an economics professor from the College of Charleston talk. Very generically about what. Trends he's seeing kind of across the nation. Um. Brumby, Brumby McLeod is his name and and Brumby has worked closely with the city. Uh, for many years, um, he's kind of always been. Interested in having our data. He uses, he's used our data to to. Kind of show trends and and watch trends. For ten, fifteen years. So we've we've had a long. Good working relationship with College of Charleston with Brumby in particular. So. I thought it was interesting. I mean, it was.
Just a sidebar, a lot of the companies um work with the software programs. They're all different. But uh, we have to all developed uh feeds through so that he can gather um our data. And I believe it's, um, I think it's beachside, island realty and wild dunes. I'm not sure if Bacasa. Is feeding through their information. So it's fairly, it's a pretty comprehensive. Capture of the the vacation rental.
Is that, that's key data? Is that?
Key data.
Key data is the software that. Ultimately captures it all.
Yeah. Yeah. And they work all over the country and do this.
I think we've always talked about if key and and Scott. Talked a lot about occupancy levels, and I know we've talked about. Whether, and this is a little bit of a sidebar, but if if the city should be using key data to see. Occupancy percentage rates. Is that, that is something that that group could give us, correct?
I believe so. I'm not sure who participates, but yes, and like the DOT's traffic count, there's a little extrapolation. Well, it's just, it is what they get. Here's the number of units and it is this occupant.
And they know. Through their units and through the companies that participate, they know that collectively they're seventy five percent booked this weekend.
Uh huh. Correct.
So that's, that's an interesting, because because we do have, speaking of the budget, we do have um. Some additional money. In the budget, we we currently use. Or we are, we currently use a. A service that captures kind of a web crawling thing that captures rentals that are happening and identifies when a rental is. Going on without a license. But it doesn't do. What you're talking about. And we have, we do have money. Um.
So the company you have is actually. Very limited in what it can. Look at too. I mean, I don't think they're pulling from our website, for instance. Um.
Unless, unless you have listed. On multiple, unless they're they're pulling from. Airbnb, VRBO. You know, so it'd have to be. That have to be kind of cross advertised.
Yes. They have to, yeah, exactly, because a lot of companies use both. Airbnb and V B O, VRBO, as well as their own website. So they could be listed out there three or four different times. Yeah. And it's very difficult because they're not all generic. It's not all one, two, three, empty, empty street on everybody's website for how their rules are too.
Right.
It's very uh, very complicated.
So, um. The the issue is now with city council. I I have heard. Um, and I I don't know if they are of a mindset to. Take it up at their next council meeting, which would be two weeks from yesterday. That would kind of be the natural progression, but I haven't heard. Uh, if it'll be on the agenda for their consideration at that meeting. I kind of think it will be, but but it may not. I mean, that. As you all know, I mean, it. It kind of took this group a year of looking at it and kind of grinding through it to come to a place of um being ready to. Have a recommendation. So I don't know if they'll, if they'll take their time and. Um. Sort through it or if they will, if they'll just kind of charge forward. I will say that we are. Um, we are seeing a significant uptick in the licenses that we're issuing. Um, and it seems like every news. You know, every. Every time it's on the news, we get fifteen more. Uh, each time. So, you know, now it's kind of been on the. Been in the news ten different occasions. So that's something like a hundred. I think we, I think we've. Increased uh the number of licenses by over a hundred. Since uh you all pushed it on like a month ago. So it's.
I get the question I have would have is, is it specific, specific to any? Of the three proposed capped areas? Or is it a mix and blend of uncapped and capped?
So a lot of it in area two.
Okay.
You know, it's.
To be expected.
And yeah, it's, it is not a lot of those that are rushing in or an uncapped area.
But most of the people I've talked to or approached me don't have a clue. They just got one for the sake of getting one.
Yeah.
They don't understand the zones or what.
Right.
The the numbers that we look back and. And the year that it was to get there. So most ones that have come to me have just. Just did it.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of that. People just. Doing it to think, thinking they're being saved.
Well, Mount Zero.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's a real thing. Um, I've heard, uh. I've heard kind of the sentiment that. The zones. Aren't useful. I mean, that's one kind of uh tact that I've heard, heard another sentiment that is, it's unnecessary to do it. Um, so kind of hearing different, I don't know, I don't know what the will of council will be, but um. There seems to, you know, kind of like any group of ten, you ask ten, you're gonna get ten different opinions about the best approach, but. Um, clearly, I, you know, to me, I think it's. It is being received as a well thought out. I mean, it clearly was thoroughly thought through and there's logic behind it and. Um. So I think it's at a minimum appreciated. So we'll see where it goes. I I do, and you will probably know that Folly Beach has decided not to implement a cap. That was. Ironically, that's kind of the, it was a reaction to their initial talk about a cap that got us talking about a cap. They've since decided, they initially talked about a moratorium. Decided not to do that and then a cap. And they've, I think, decided not to do that. Um.
But didn't it get so out of control that they just kind of threw their hands up?
I was, and Nicole told me this first and I. I had. Yeah, and it's.
On channel four, they're forty one percent rental and he said fifty percent.
Yeah, over fifty percent rentals.
I, and I think at that point, there's nothing you can do to cut back. So that's why I think they threw their hands up. I don't think they've decided to.
Hostile conversation for I understand that. I don't know what the, I mean, it was a five and two. It wasn't like a three or four.
Right.
I don't know what it was that made. People vote against it. I don't know what was buried inside of that, that maybe they were voting against one thing as opposed to.
Right, I I don't know.
Yeah. I didn't, I don't know. I've read them minutes.
Any thoughts, comments? Questions about?
Do we have a full time rental person that manages licensing?
Yeah, got two.
Several.
Two, if not four.
Are you, are you speaking of yourself?
Me.
But you guys wear many hats.
We do.
That's why I said, isn't there like just one full time designated person to do, there's nothing but manage licenses. Look at.
So I I would say. That. Genie. And Nikki. They are ninety percent of their day. Dealing with rentals, you know, and because. Um, uh, maybe not ninety, maybe seventy percent, maybe seventy percent of two people. Um. And they are, they are the kind of keeping the documentation straight, keeping it in the computer, keeping ownership straight, keeping. Uh, when they change. Uh. When they change ownership, that's a new license. So. Yeah, there's, there's.
And then there's a software program.
Software program that's watching. And then the police, I mean, we have, there's livability. Uh, currently. Two, they've just hired another um. Uh, currently two, they've just hired a, another um. Part-time. So there's a livability branch. There used to be a livability court that was solely dedicated to it, but the, the. The number of cases actually going to the court got so low that the court. Uh, morphed into just a regular court.
So it looks like you. With all due respect, that everything is kind of, you know, with short-term rentals. It's kind of a whole host of people that are managing it.
Yes, different aspects, right.
Part of their daily job. I didn't know if it would be more effective to have one person just on it. And a nice software package that is on it.
Currently, it's twenty-four, seven and not nine to five.
I didn't mean nine to five. I mean, you're gonna have aspects that, that will defer after five. You've got the police and the fire, but you know. I'm just looking at, maybe there's a better way to. Free up some of their time so they can get actual things done and have somebody on it full-time.
You know, the work is very um. It is, it is very overwhelming during renewal times. I mean, there's fifteen hundred different. Interactions on a, on a license. Um, I'm sorry, there's fifteen hundred licenses being interacted like three, four, five different times. So it's, it's tens of thousands of different. Interactions, but that's really kind of a three-month. Process, getting the renewals out, getting them back in, getting the accounting done. Then it goes to very much a monitoring situation, and that is done. By software and, and just managers that are dealing with, well, this one came out, this one's going in, this one's sold. And then the, the software, you know, kind of alerting that a new ones. Come up for rent. So it, it, it's very much a feast or famine. Um. So I don't know that, so one person would be too little for three months, and then it would be too much for. The other nine months.
Okay, I understand.
There's also a dispatcher that's assisting with a lot of the different uh, calls that come in.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know that.
Got a varied staff that are all working together.
And I don't think any, I mean, I think all of the um. Our kind of arrangement is modeled directly after the City of Charles. Uh, livability court department. Um, and that's the, that's the way we set it up fifteen years ago was to be pretty much a direct. Copy of the City of Charleston. Changed a little bit, but I don't know any, I don't think anybody's just doing it with one person. I mean, it's a, there's a police element to it that has. Livability officers dealing with it. There's kind of a, a large part of it is clerical, you know, administrative work. You then have the kind of contentious things that happen that kind of elevates itself to a.
That's, I was really a more clerical focus, because we have so many rentals.
Yeah, I would say that there really are two very much full-time people dealing with it, plus the software. Um, and there's, there was multiple different softwares, but you know, there's an accounting aspect of it that's one system. So there's several different suites of software that are in play, but. I, from my perspective, the current um. The current. Law of the land wouldn't justify additional staffing. I think that there's been a concern, because right now, if somebody's not renting a house. It is a call to that person and, you know, it depends on if they've. Been renting it, they didn't renew, or if it's new rental and they didn't know or what this, but it's, it's basically a call of. You need to get a accommodations account number and you need to pay us a few hundred bucks. And it's a very easy. Uh, thing to gain compliance with. If we change to a situation where we're over a cap. And you cannot rent a license, you, we can't give you a license, you just have to stop altogether. That's gonna, that's a much more challenging enforcement situation than what we currently have. It's, like I said, it's just. Give us a check, we're gonna get your paperwork in order, and that's done typically by that afternoon, and that's an instant. Um. Compliance is gained instantly and then they're left to continue renting, but. For in a situation where there's a lot of demand to rent and we are telling people you cannot rent, we cannot give you a license. That's a very different situation. So that could. That very well could warrant some additional enforcement. Resources if we're, if we're kind of covered up with rogue underground black market rental. Situation that could take a lot more time than just a phone call of you, you owe us a few hundred bucks. So we'll see, that's got, uh, that does kind of have everybody's attention, that potential problem. But it'll all, you know. How many, how many cap are, are the caps gonna be implemented? Are instantly we're gonna be up against a cap? Is there gonna be? Four, five, six properties trying to rent and unable to get a license, or is it gonna be a hundred properties? You know, all of that would, would tell us. What the reaction should be.
So just a real, real quick, um. I don't remember the exact numbers, but area one, two and three is where we have proposed caps. Area one. I'm calling it right, area one.
Real zone one, reach in like kind of in.
Zone one, thank you. Had. Approximately seventy.
Seventy-one, yeah.
Yeah. And there was very little, there was very little growth, or it was flat line as I remember. However, there was turnover.
A lot of turnover, forty, seventy-one and like only forty were consistent, something like that.
So, oh, and I'm saying this more just as a public interest uh, to those that might be listening. In these zones, we saw turnover within those. And so we saw units go off the market. Not all of them stayed with the new owners that bought. And that's how people will move up the list as a list becomes necessary for the cap. So seventy-one plus our ten percent, eight, call it eighty, I don't remember what the exact number in zone one as an example. Um. And there's X number of units that go off and become second homes or primary residences. Then uh, that's gonna open up some license possibilities, because I've been hearing from a lot of people. Oh, that's all gonna be winners and losers and nobody's gonna ever get a license. Well, I don't, I, I don't think that's exactly correct in the current market that we've been dealing with. Due to the pricing of the real estate, and we're using the word market, that's, that's been um. Dictated by the price points that have, have occurred, and I think that's where we're seeing and why we've seen the migration. Back to zone two primarily because it's very affordable. From a um, investment or a future retirement situation, and we do, we have a lot of people that have moved into these properties. And they're buying them, renting them until they can retire, getting a, a foothold into the market. In anticipation of it's gonna go up, it's not gonna go down. So um, that's where we're, we're seeing. The market trend push back into that zone two primarily, and there have been arguments, well, why are you messing with? Caps in zone one and why even fooling with zone three down in Wild Dunes, let them deal with it. That's just some input I've, I've had out there.
Any, so, so this idea of winners versus losers. I guess the data is showing us there's kind of mass migrate, well mass, there is migration to area two. In my thought, if there was an island-wide cap and it could just migrate freely, isn't that kind of? Putting all the pressure on island, I mean, aren't you kind of leaving? Area two open to free migration, because they're naturally leaving the other parts of the island. So in my mind, I've heard the term or the phrase picking winners and losers, and I think that it's being used. To kind of work against the idea of zones. But I'm thinking the zone is exactly the opposite and that it is actually. It's actually keeping. Zone two from being. Overwhelmed or taken or, or having a significant inflow of rentals, because there's gonna be room under the cap because they're leaving. The uncapped areas and.
Correct, but if our goal is to keep a, a, a certain percentage on the island, and, and let's, again, let's not use the third or third or third. If we eliminate the uncapped area, basically the, the back part of the island is more like fifteen or twenty percent rental licenses. So you said, okay, the back part of the island, we're gonna put a twenty percent cap across the, those.
All, when you say back part, you're saying all one, two and three collectively.
I'm just, I'm just proposing, I'm just saying, I'm just.
Fewer licenses than.
Right, it's whatever, it would be five hundred licenses across all, all one to three. I think there is an argument to say, well, then let the market determine where those are in those three zones, but the total number is not gonna go up. So that, that's what, why, I'm not talking about picking winners and losers, but we're also. If you, I'm not trying to force behavior, saying, okay, well. It, it, if we say there's a cap of five hundred in those three zones, whether it's in one, two or three, for the overall island, it doesn't necessarily matter. Let the market determine where those five hundred are.
So if you happen to live in zone two, where they're currently migrating.
But they have to come from somewhere else, in which case there's a, there's a benefit to the other part of the island, because the license left there and went over to here. It's, and what are we trying, if we're just trying to say we want to keep a number of licenses at a, an acceptable level across the island. Why should we determine what zone they have to go into? We're more looking at the gross number.
So my, I thought that we were trying to address livability issues associated with a rental coming into your neighborhood that historically hasn't had. A rental.
But the percentage of livability is, is between one and three, isn't that different either? I mean, if you live on a street in zone one or zone three. And you've got a, a twenty percent of your neighbors, it's the same as if you're in zone two. So it's. You know, the, the people in, in one and three have the same livability issues. It's easy to write them off and say, well, yeah, but they're used to it. No, they, they may not be. They're a single-family residence, just like everybody else.
But if we're seeing the laws of economics are pushing them out of those neighborhoods, I would say they. They don't have a problem.
Market, the market will determine that.
They don't, they don't. Benefit really from a cap because it's naturally going down. So to me, I guess, I, I just see that as.
I'm just.
Putting the pressure on.
That's, that's the debate. So why would we put an extra level of protection on zone two that the people in one and three don't have? Because they are single-family residents, primary residents, just like everybody else.
But you're, you are putting it there, you're capping it, but it's, it's not ever gonna do anything because the, the numbers are naturally declining anyway. So you put the cap in place.
But, but, but if you put the cap at ten percent more than what's in zone now two, you're putting a different cap in that area, a different density cap in zone two than you are in one and three.
Because it's starting at a lower number.
That's all I'm saying.
So just say ten percent.
Working or is it not working?
It's working. It's working. Let the market determine where the licenses go.
So I, I don't think I've heard that, that zone two, because it's so low.
Doctor Mifflin pointed out once real quickly, what's, are you, are you looking at different densities in the zone? The answer is yes.
Yeah, zone two does, has historically had a lower. Density and we're only allowing it to go that low density plus ten percent.
That's, that's the debate.
Yeah, I heard him mention that.
Right, exactly right.
But I don't, that's, I mean, that is.
When someone talked about, you know, are you setting yourself up for controversy? Well, you start setting different densities in different zones, you're opening another can of worms, so to speak.
I don't think we were setting really significant density differences and.
If only ten percent are in zone two and seventeen percent are in zone three and twenty percent are in zone two, you're set different densities. And that's another variable. Unless, we may wanna, they, council may wanna do that, but, but you've now, you've gone to another, you've gotten granular one level, saying we're gonna have different densities in each of those three zones.
You know, your, the research you all did on this is, is better than mostly any H, any NIH grants I review every year. And it was painful conclusion and it's fine, it's, don't, don't tell yourself or, yeah, something else worry about it. Done. It was good, it was well researched.
But that, that was his point about, you know, you.
Just say.
Density is in its own, that's a different variable.
If A is ten. B is five. C is fifteen, set it at ten.
That's, that's an argument.
Across the board.
Right.
Which we did not do.
Which we did not.
And remove the zones.
Right.
So there's, but I don't know that I.
We. I. Felt very strongly that zone two um, deserved. The attention that we gave it and the cap that we gave it. And looking at zone one where there'd been very little change. Um, I felt maybe we should not cap it, just leave it alone too, because it's not changing. However, if we did change two, I suspect one might change. We didn't change, if we didn't cap three. Uh, which I was quasi on the fence, so let's leave three alone too. We, I believe would have pushed that element into three. By capping only two. So I, I felt confident and comfortable. Doing all three zones the way we did it.
I was gonna say, that was kind of my feelings. It, it's the migrations we're seeing is not between zone one, two and three. It's between the uncapped area and those zones. So if we. At this. Cap zone two.
Time you're not seeing that migration, because you haven't set up a, a variable that would, would benefit that.
No, we have, over the past years, we're, we're seeing a migration off of. The numbers haven't changed, but those areas are increasing. Where are they coming from? They've gotta be coming from the uncapped areas.
I think they're also coming from three.
But going back to what Sandy was saying is, if we cap two. Then those, that migration is still gonna happen, it's just gonna go to one and three now.
Exactly, so when two reaches cap, then they're gonna start going to three, so.
So we had to kind of set them where they are if we didn't want things to.
That was my point of unintended consequences. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And let council wrestle with all those things, because that's, that's the issue.
Yeah.
Right now, we don't see that migration, because there's no, there's no driving force. But as soon as you reach a cap here, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to three, one, or they go to the uncapped zone. There's still a thousand houses available for licenses in the uncapped zone.
Just a hundred thousand that are for sale.
So.
And there.
There are unintended consequences.
Yeah.
Too many, too many millions to justify.
You're shopping in zone one, two or three, uh, the uncapped zone's probably not affordable.
We didn't cap some, I mean, in general, and I talk about ocean front, on, on ocean, I agree.
I don't believe your one thousand homes are available out there, and to Jeff's point, they're not for sale. I don't think we're, we're creating a situation where those. Those are coming out and it.
Under the current structure.
The price anyways, it's the price points.
And I was gonna say, going back to your, the whole. Transition of that licenses will be available. I kind of, you know, when we started, thought that, but then here what you're saying is. We're now gonna probably exceed the caps in all the areas of people getting licensed that aren't used, I mean, will they be giving them up? Because, you know, I, I think that, that's gonna create a temporary problem, probably.
In a year, when they have to prove that they've marketed and or income, and now they're. All of their ducks in a row, there'll be some open licenses.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder, it'll be interesting to see and because I don't know if those people getting them. Are they going to go through the headaches of actually renting them, marketing them? And kind of gaining three thousand dollars of rental income. I, I'm guessing that some probably will, you know, and we'll, we'll get some renewals that are gonna all be three thousand, three thousand. And, but they're gonna have documented proof, just like.
And they're gonna pay their taxes, and they're gonna pay their taxes, and they're gonna say, it's worth it. I, I get to keep my license for doing that. Some people may say that's worth it.
Yeah.
So, I, and I, on that application form, I've often thought that, um. The management companies, for the most part, manage the accommodations tax payments. Um, I know we do and, and some of the bigger companies do. I don't know about everybody. Um. We don't ask for their account numbers on the applications to verify them with the state that they have an accommodations tax. Account, do we?
We do.
The city does. Unless they're managed.
Unless they're exclusively managed by somebody who has an account. If they're owner-managed, we get their account number. That's one of the things they indicate to us.
Okay. I briefly looked through that application and, and paid attention at that level.
So if they're under managed, you look for the tax number.
Correct.
And you're saying that you guys don't owe it all. Do you or do you not? How did you say that? Did, you don't?
We pay your tax for you.
Okay, because I was gonna say, I wasn't, what you just said.
If you're exclusively through a company, that company has an account. If your owner managed, you need to have your own.
Right.
Accommodations tax.
Okay, we got off track there.
Yeah, that's all.
What was your update?
That was my update. It's getting, it's getting worked through and we'll keep you posted on what progress it makes. I, I think you all did a fine job. Uh, last thing miscellaneous business for me is, and I think. Did we talk about the code of conduct last month? Was it in your packet?
Yeah.
We touched base on it.
Yeah. Uh. We briefly went through and said it's there.
It's there, there is a, there is a final page at the end of it that requests a signature. I believe it's all voluntary, or you don't get kicked off the planning commission if you don't sign it, but. If you're willing to sign it and give it to us, I will put it in the planning commission file. But you will certainly always conduct yourself and, and, and a proper. Proper way.
I was wondering if before anyone signed, if there should be a legal brief on this, much like we had with the. The prior.
You want to, I mean, we can.
Yeah, I'm not sure, um. Not a lawyer, so I'm, you know, I don't know a lot of the implications here in terms of, um. Lot of this seems actually weighted towards members of committees and not, not council. As I read through it. And I don't have a problem signing it.
Um, how about we put it on? The agenda for our next legal briefing. I mean, we, we generally do that first meeting of the year. That's five months away. Just, I don't think there's any, I mean, we've never had it. It's completely kind of new and. Um, I don't think there's any co- conduct issues, so. Why don't we just ask that the city attorney, when he, when he's next here, talk to you all about it?
I think that would be appropriate.
Alright, somebody's gonna have to remind me that. I just have to remember when I set the legal briefing, to tell him to do that.
Which will be when?
January. Unless you wanted to, do you wanna do it now? I don't.
I don't, I don't know what the. Urgency is, but I also don't know what the implications are.
There's no, it's be on your best behavior, please. What you all always do. I don't think there's any concerns that there's any implications. Is there a reason, something that prompted this?
I think there's.
Some prior council members.
Okay, yeah. Because this reproach thing, you know, beyond reproach.
Yeah.
I mean, most of this stuff actually just reads like all those codes of ethics.
Yeah.
You know, we used to have to read and, and get continuing it. Yes, it's kind of floated around as, as an idea. City of Charleston needed it. Alright, I don't have anything else. Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
I didn't get to discuss.
No, there's no discussion and there's no denying.
No discussing, there's no denying.